Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Thousand Oaks City Council and Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, October 26, 2010. This time we'll call the meeting to order. Would you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Bill de la Peña is absent at this time. Councilmember Irwin?
Here.
Councilmember Glancy?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Fox?
Here.
Mayor Gillette?
Here. Thank you. Item four on our agenda, request for continuance of any public hearing or agenda item. I'm not aware of any. The answer to that would be none. Special Presentations and Announcements. We've reached the portion of our meeting usually reserved for special presentations. We do not have any special presentations this evening, however. Our audience may have noticed that many of our staff members are wearing pink tonight. In fact, our employees were encouraged to participate today in this celebration of 25 years of breast cancer awareness, education, and empowerment. Each year, more than 192,000 women will be diagnosed with breast cancer. And yet, there's much to celebrate because breast cancer has become one of the most visible causes in this country, creating a national dialogue around its awareness, research, and cure. I'd like to just mention to our residents that on November 9, the City Council will be acknowledging Veterans Day. We do this through opening our Military Services Journal. The journal began in 2008. It's a log kept in the city archives that lists names, rank, years of service, locations of service duty, of residents, and their family members who have served or are serving in the United States Armed Forces. Each year, on a day near Veterans Day, the log is opened between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. This year, the date is set for November 9, and the journal will be available for signing in the lobby of the Sheer Forum Theater. The table will be staffed by the Thousand Oaks Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 11-395. For more information, you may call area code 805-449-2134. That's 805-449-2134. Or email MLEC, M-L-E-C-H, M-L-E-C-H, at T-Ox.org. The email address again is M-L-E-C-H, at T-Ox.org. We invite residents to come and add your family's information. Our military are doing a wonderful job, and it's a privilege to acknowledge them in this special way. I'd also like to add that another project the city will be involved with beginning this year is participation in the Library of Congress Veterans History Program. Through the work of two of our citizens, Forrest Frielz and Dan McDermott, filming of Thousand Oaks veterans will be available. The videos are going to be spontaneous interviews with veterans that experience unusual stories or assignments. Filming will take place in various locations as well as in our TO-TV, Thousand Oaks TV studio. Interview tapes will then be added to the Library of Congress Collection. We'd like to thank Forrest and Dan for taking on this project. If residents have questions, please call area code 805-499-4497. That's area code 805-499-4497. And while we're talking about veterans and military respect and response, on December 22, Cabrillo Music Theater will be hosting, it'll be the Christmas Rocket Show. In the large theater, 1,800 people from Naval Base Ventura County have been invited and will be brought down by buses from the base. They'll be greeted by the Thousand Oaks Rotary Club. For the children, there will be hot cider and chocolate and Santa Claus and carolers and what have you. And the military families will be treated to an evening of entertainment in the big theater from Cabrillo Music Theater. Item six on our agenda, Public Comments. Would the clerk please call Public Comments?
This is the time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All speakers for public hearings shall be called and heard during the public hearing. Pursuant to council standards of operation, the mayor may assist any speaker from straying into areas not within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the City Council as a whole. Under state law, issues discussed under public comments can have no action unless listed on the agenda and may be referred to the city manager for administrative action or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. All documents for City Council and the official city records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Three people have presented cards. In pursuit to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you. Ordinarily, under the Public Comments section, at the conclusion of the council meeting, the city manager responds if there are issues, if he has information that assists the people that are speaking on a particular topic. And so that you don't have to wait around, and for people that are out of the community that have taken the time to come down and express some comments on issues, immediately after the presentations for item six, the city manager will be asked if he has responses to any of the issues that have been brought forward. Okay. At this time, Dick Thompson. Mr. Thompson? Followed by Judith Rue. Evening, Mr. Thompson. And as asked, please give your name and community of residence.
President of the Ventura County Taxpayers Association, on their behalf to express our concern publicly about the city's lifetime health insurance benefit that is available to employees that have been employed for as little as five years. In our view, this is an overly generous benefit. It is not offered to employees of other cities in the county or county employees. It is an unnecessary burden to taxpayers, and it is puzzling why Thousand Oaks would think it is necessary. Even more surprising is that the benefit is provided to city council members. We question why the taxpayers should be responsible for providing city council members and their spouses with medical insurance for life with no dollar limit. Council members volunteer to run for the part-time office because of a desire to serve their community and to make a difference. We recognize that some level of compensation is appropriate, but candidates certainly do not run for the benefits and especially not for a lifetime benefit. This is way out of line with benefits available in the private sector. In October of 1997, the council approved Resolution 97-204, which became effective on January 1 in 1998. Whatever the perceived need was back then, it doesn't exist today. With 13 candidates vying for three seats, Thousand Oaks residents face a difficult choice among many well-qualified candidates. It hardly seems necessary to continue to offer this benefit, which creates an open-ended liability for the city and the taxpayers who will pay for it. We urge you to repeal Resolution 97-204 and eliminate this unnecessary and open-ended expense. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Judith Rue. Followed by Mr. Nick Kidway. Good evening, Ms. Rue.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Judith Rue. I'm a 26-year resident of Thousand Oaks. I'm here tonight to support the Ventura County Taxpayers Association and their urge for a repeal of Resolution 97-204. I am currently retired, but was the president of Rolls Royce of Beverly Hills for nine years before my retirement. I'm certain that in today's economic climate, the citizens of Thousand Oaks would consider it outrageous that their future generations would be paying for such a preposterous expense. All city employees should be just compensated for work that is performed while they are working. I want you to know that I appreciate our city council. I value your service to our community and your contribution to the quality of life we enjoy here in Thousand Oaks. That is why I was deeply disappointed recently here that we have a situation like this. Elected office is a public trust. It is not an opportunity to line one's pockets or create personal security. I strongly object to this incredibly generous healthcare benefit. I don't know what circumstances were that led to the decision creating this situation, but it is time to put a stop to it. It is undeniably extravagant. You won't find this in private business, and it's wrong to expect me and other Thousand Oaks citizens to pay for you and your family's healthcare without limit for the rest of your lives after only five years of service. This item has not been much of a campaign issue. Perhaps it should have been. Personally, I think this is an issue of integrity and trust between the citizens and our elected representatives. I'm here this evening to ask you to repeal this resolution that created this benefit. As a resident, I hope for your cooperation. This is an opportunity to increase trust in our elected officials, and I urge you to take advantage of it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And our final speaker, Mr. Nick Kidway. Mr. Kidway?
I begin in the name of God, who's the most beneficial, most merciful, Nick "Igbal" Kidway, resident of Newbury Park, Director of Concerns in the South Thousand Oaks, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Distinguished President of the Taxpayers Club. It's about time you showed up. I mean, these are not the horse and buggy days that it's so difficult to come over the hill. There are worse problems in this city than in Oxnard, and I don't know what the DA is doing, just going after the Oxnard people. This building was built on a sense, on a pit of lies and debt, and that has not been acknowledged. I mean, there's so much debt in the city, it's not even funny, and the citizens of the city deserve something better. And then, besides income, there's all kinds of resolutions. If TO-TV will show the picture, these are, this is of Rancher Road and TO Boulevard. This is one of the few cities, maybe the only city that I know of, that in, on public open space, people who want to serve the community cannot put a political sign. And it's basically designed so that incumbents who have name recognition can be reelected. And that's why there's not a prayer that any of these challengers will be able to change any of those seats. Millions of dollars. I mean, TO-TV, that's the former Westlake Hospital. If you can show it again, TO-TV, it's completely boarded up. I mean, these people do not vote for the, in the interest of the residents. The old citizens where Mayor Gillette himself lives, his neighbors, I mean, their property values will go down by 10% because they voted for an over-expansion of the hospital, existing hospital, rather than reopening this other one so this corporation, major corporation could make mega bucks. Those are the issues. But, I mean, that's one of the reasons you have 13 candidates. There's no time to discuss them. Nobody knows even their names. And then everybody says, you know, "We are for bringing businesses," as if they were the salesmen for Thousand Oaks. Take a look at this TO-TV. This is the former TO, I don't know, former Kmart, which is lying empty. Home Depot was willing to invest millions of dollars to bring more jobs, yet all the incumbents, except Dr. Glancy, voted against this. And this is the example that goes out to corporate America, that this city does not welcome business. I've been talking, I mean, they're changing the rules because of you, which is good. I mean, they took away from five minutes to three minutes, so that, that's one of the reasons no citizens come over here, because they know you are a laughing stock if you come over here, because nobody cares about you. And they don't answer what you say, and generally, the meetings go till 11:00, and that's when they answer, selectively too. I mean, when is this sign ordinance going to be changed? Why are the campaign contributions hidden in the bowels of the website? Why is it not on the front page? I want to ask and get answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. That concludes our speakers under public comment. City manager, do you have a response to any of the information presented?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm going to ask Assistant City Manager Candace Hong to touch base with the two speakers from the Ventura County Taxpayers Association. We would be more than happy to meet with them and to walk them through the issues they've raised. We were unaware of their issues until another city manager made us aware of a letter they've submitted. And just for the record, and I've shared this with council, but for the record, the type of benefits, they're talking about it at two levels. At one level, dealing with city employees; the other level, dealing with city council members. With respect to the city employees, what's called OPEB, the Other Post-Employment Benefits, in this case, retiree health insurance, the letter you received is inaccurate. The benefit's not unique to Thousand Oaks. There are at least six cities in the county that receive that benefit. Some are more generous, some are less generous. And we have a funding plan in place to meet our obligations. We were the first city in the state of California to participate with the PERS Savings Plan to meet our obligations. We're very proud of that. And we would welcome the opportunity to sit down with the Taxpayers Association and explain to them what we do. And we cap the benefit for the employees. It's capped at $435 a month that the city will pay for premiums for those who are eligible. And that's not out of line with what some other cities are doing throughout the state. So it's a benefit. It's out there. It's been capped, and we have a funding plan for that, and we've had a number of public discussions about that plan. I need to be careful because this is not on the agenda. So we welcome that opportunity to meet with you and go through it in great detail and also make you aware of what other cities do, and then, as necessary, report back to the city council. That's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mitnick. Item seven, City and Redevelopment Consent Calendar. City Council? Dr. Glancy?
Move the consent calendar.
Have a motion, comment to the motion? There being none, please vote.
Mayor, we do have a speaker.
Oh, excuse me. Sorry, Mr. Kidway. We do have one speaker before we act. Mr. Nick Kidway. Mr. Kidway?
Nick Kidway, Director of Concerns in the South Thousand Oaks. I hope the Taxpayers President and the other people will notice that this is a normal thing. I mean, you come from Oxnard, where you chase. I mean, they have a three-ring binder. They don't have this problem of not being able to, there's hardly any citizen speaking, but they cannot even come up with a card. I want to just bring the attention, I mean, if you folks want to see about these lavish salaries and benefits, the basic American tool is minutes. And now with the internet, they're on the internet. Dr. Glancy, thanks for eating. And on the internet, you can read them. But the minutes are completely un-American. In fact, they've degraded even to a lower level, because if you look at the draft minutes that are posted for September 26, in the past, citizens who spoke, at least, I mean, they would not put any comment. That's one of the things that did it. So you cannot get an idea as to what people were saying, like any other jurisdiction. But in this latest minute, they don't even put, if the citizen was pro or con, not even that. And the sad thing is that, I mean, they just responded to you, but they won't respond to other citizens that come over here. I just talked about the sign ordinance. It was completely ignored, and they say there's a minority council member, but she's quiet about the minutes. I mean, what is the whole purpose of having people there? If TO-TV would be kind enough to show this, because this is relevant, because the minutes are un-American, this is a rally that was held right here at City Hall to complain about the Constitution being violated. And that's what this amounts to. I mean, you may call me idiot or whatever, because if we do not have basic rights, what is the advantage? I mean, if we didn't have any candidates, we wouldn't have an election. I mean, and if you didn't have viable candidates, having an election would be meaningless. If you have minutes, or if you have meetings where citizens are not welcome, where their comments are not recorded, this is more un-American than even the great leader in North Korea. I mean, and I wish I didn't have to say this and bring these things, but somebody has to do it, because this city is worth it. It's worth fighting. The citizens of this city deserve better than this consent calendar. In fact, this is where the, now, the city manager's contracts and the city attorney's contracts are hidden in the, rather than having as a report, they have it in the, and right now, it's six pages. It's 22 pages. So there's 30 items, including the raises for the city manager, instead of having, being a report. And that's the way it used to be in this city. But the city has slipped down because the Taxpayers Association has given them a break. I hope you will be more vigilant and come back and take care of them. We appreciate your coming.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Okay, we have a motion, comments to the motion. There being none, please vote. We'll move to item eight, A, Public Hearing. Would the clerk please call, open the hearing?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8A, a municipal code amendment to adopt the 2010 California State Building Code, including green building standards, with local amendments MCA 2010-70343. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding this public hearing. All documents for City Council and the official city records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. We have one person who has presented a speaker card. In pursuit to council standards, the speaker will be allowed five minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you. Staff report. Mr. David Hunors, Deputy Director, Building Official. Good evening, Mr. Hunors.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, and council members. The municipal code amendment before you tonight is important and necessary step that Thousand Oaks needs to take. We are not alone in this, because all cities and counties in California are currently going through this similar process. To provide you a little background, California has adopted a National Model Code for Building Construction. This approach helps designers and builders have a more consistent set of requirements for construction across the United States. However, several state agencies have made necessary amendments to the model codes. The state has completed their amendments, and the codes have been made available to the city to review, amend, and adopt. Periodic updates of the state codes are needed for construction regulation to remain current with improvements in methods and materials of construction and improvements in building, engineering, and environmental factors. State codes are adopted roughly every three years. In this current code cycle, the city is mandated to adopt the new state codes by January 1, 2011. The city is permitted to make amendments to the state code, provided these amendments are more restrictive and are based on findings that are specific to local climate, geology, or topography. The proposed ordinance contains the necessary findings to justify local amendments. The ordinance will also repeal existing municipal code provisions and replace them with the 2010 edition of the California Building Plumbing Electrical Mechanical and 2009 Uniform Solar Code. Also in this code cycle, a new code, the California Residential Code, has been added. And also, the California Green Building Standards Code is essentially new, because it has been modified extensively and contains many more mandatory features. The new California Residential Code applies to construction of one and two-family dwellings and townhomes. This code consolidates the code requirements from the building code in a more user-friendly volume for designers, builders, and inspectors who specialize in residential construction. This code also contains up-to-date standards and requirements for the use of innovative building materials. The California Green Building Standards Code includes regulations for a variety of issues regarding planning and design. The code requires that careful evaluation and planning be used to minimize the negative effects on the site and adjacent areas. This section also requires that things like bicycle parking facilities be provided and designated parking spaces for clean air vehicles for commercial buildings. Regarding energy efficiency, this code states that the buildings must comply with the requirements of the California Energy Code. Regarding water efficiency and conservation, there are requirements to reduce indoor water demand by 20% and provide outdoor landscape watering budgets with irrigation systems controlled by weather or soil moisture. Regarding material conservation and efficiency, there are requirements to reduce construction waste and to require recycling. Currently adopted city regulations exceed the minimum requirements of the Green Building Code by 10% in this category. Regarding environmental quality, the code sets standards to protect indoor air quality. This is done in part by regulating the types of adhesive, sealants, caques, paint, coatings, floor coverings that are used. Also, exterior fresh air is also required through improved ventilation standards. In addition to the mandatory features in the Green Code, there are a number of voluntary measures that designers may incorporate into their buildings to make them more efficient and thereby having a more positive and less negative impact on the environment. Regarding local amendments to the state code, the proposed amendments contain both administrative and technical changes. The findings required by state law have been included in applicable code sections. Just to mention, a majority of the local amendments are changes that have, are being carried over from our previous code amendments. Staff has worked with the fire district and sheriff's department to develop several of these local amendments. For example, the building security provisions in Chapter 41 were recommended by the sheriff's department are being carried over from the current code. These security requirements help make buildings and occupants more secure from forced entry and also provide security lighting requirements. Working with the fire district, the city has amended the building code to require more fire-resistant roofing materials than the minimum requirements in the state code because of local conditions such as annual hot, dry, and winds in proximity of the city to large areas of combustible vegetation. The ordinance also carries forward longstanding foundation design requirements. These requirements were found to be necessary because of the expansive soils in the Cano Valley and can cause damage to foundations unless there are mitigating conditions taken care of. Copies of the ordinance were provided for review and comment to the Chamber, Building Industry Association, Ventura Chapter of the American Institute of Architects, and the Ventura County Contractors Association. A representative from the BIA called and questioned our plans to adopt the Green Building Standards and if there are any proposed amendments. It was explained that the city plans to adopt- It was explained that the city plans to adopt the Green Code as presented by the state. In conclusion, staff recommends the ordinance be introduced, including specific findings requiring to justify recommended local amendments. This concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Huners. Are there any questions of staff? You have a question? Oh, I was looking at that. Yes, Mrs. Irwin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Huners, on page eight, you're talking about a local amendment, more fire-resistant roof covering. Is this for new buildings, or is this for remodels? And can you explain a little bit about what the requirement was before and what we're moving to?
This is one of the local amendments that we're continuing to carry forward from previous codes. It requires a, the next highest level of fire resistance for roof covering materials in new construction, and also for re-roofing projects. And this is a requirement the city has had in place for a number of years.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further? Ms. Bildelapena?
Good evening, Mr. Huner. Now, if the city wanted to become a little bit more specific regarding green building standards, including materials, for example, that I mentioned at the last council meeting, such as insulation concrete forms, the, is that something that the city then would do? Is that something the city can do? It was my impression that we would be able to do that.
The city can modify the state codes to make them more restrictive than the state code, based on findings of either topographic, geological, or climatic conditions, or environmental factors. In the case of the Green Building Code, they also include environmental factors.
I don't necessarily mean more restrictive. It doesn't have to be more restrictive. I'm just wondering whether we can provide more options.
Well, I've, as I mentioned, the residential building code is a new code. And within that code, there are several innovative design features. And I believe the insulated concrete forms that you're speaking of are in that residential code now. It's actually been codified.
Thank you.
Any further questions of staff? There being none, we do have a speaker on this subject, Mr. Kidway.
Good evening, Mayor Nick Kidway, resident of Newbury Park, representing Concerned Citizens of Thousand Oaks. I do appreciate staff bringing this quote forward. I'm as much an environmentalist as a person next door, but there should really be concerns. And I'm disappointed that none of the council challenges are here, because this was, and it's a perfect opportunity to talk about what is wrong and how good things are sugar-coated as chocolate and vanilla, and they're really not what they seem to be. This is the entire Constitution of the United States of America. For many years, I used to carry it in my vest all the time. And I didn't want to burn pages, but this ordinance is 90 pages, 90 pages. I mean, what's wrong with government? I mean, I worked, in fact, on the consent calendar, you had a Xerox doc attack, and I worked for Xerox and Conica and all that. And we thought that it was going to be the end of copiers, because who would need to print paper, et cetera, when we can have it digitally? But we were all wrong. And it just ends up printing more and more and wasting resources. And we're talking about green building waste. And why, why do you need so much? In fact, page one, financial impact. No additional funding is requested, because the cost is minimal in indirect staff time and hearing notices. This is what is known as the no common sense in government. In fact, this is a great time to read reports. Thank you, council, for reading the reports. I mean, this is a short meeting, anyway. What is the indirect cost? Have you, any of you looked at it? I have been involved directly and indirectly in some endeavors within the building industry. And two years ago, was involved in the rollout of a paint nationally that has zero VOCs. VOCs are volatile organic compounds. The ad of the paint was that you can paint with the windows closed. And the point is that what we learned in school, and Dr. Glancy learned a long time before me, but I learned a long time ago also myself, I have gray hair, too. So I don't know what they're teaching the young kids that are sitting over here about economics, because you price something by direct cost, add overhead, and what you get is a profit. But now the pricing is not based on cost-plus, it's based on what the market will bear and what you can get. And so the paint was, cost us the same as the other paint, but we priced it $10 more per can, so that we could make more money. And it went off the shelves, especially in Thousand Oaks and Golita, because there are a lot of environmentalists that care about it. And we did have a mousetrap that was released earlier, because now just about everybody has those, that paint now, two years later, because there's a six-month time lag. But the disappointing thing was about this city, and I mentioned this, I think, at the Planning Commission, that I read about the transportation center being the first Leeds building in the county, and I was excited that it was in Thousand Oaks. And I was excited to get some free publicity also. And I was going, wanted to give the paint free to the city, but I had hardly any bites from the staff. And it was very disappointing, because, not because I was trying to make a buck or that it was, but if they are really into getting products that are good for the environment, you would think that they would, they would have wanted to get more information about it. But it was a typical attitude, like is in this council, reading staff reports, when citizen, I mean, only one citizen comes and speaks. It's wonderful to get such wonderful reception from the council, but it just solidifies my desire that a lot of work needs to be done, and we should really keep coming back. One of the things that, in this report constantly, is fees, 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 fees. There's no taxes. I mean, there's a very nice commercial running for some of the propositions, saying that let's just raise the taxes in the name of fees, and the people won't notice. I hope the people are watching. I mean, this city is really out of control. We really need to make some changes, and I hope that they will be done. Thank you, Mayor, for letting me speak. I don't appreciate the people who are not listening.
Staff response, anything? Any additional comment? Yes?
Yeah, I just wanted to call the council's attention to the supplemental packet. We do have the additional memorandum pointing out that this, adoption of this ordinance is in line with Citywide Priority 4B, as adopted by the council in April, and that is the green building practices. There are also a couple of typos that are in the staff report that are corrected there. And we are attached, attached to that report is the, some minor technical and formatting changes to certain pages of the ordinance, which are incorporated in our staff recommendation now.
Thank you very much, Mr. Prescott. Any additional questions of staff? There being none at this time, I'll close the, close the public hearing, open for council discussion or action. Mrs. Bildelapena?
I would like to move recommendation of the ordinance.
Have a motion? Comments to the motion? There being none, please vote.
Motion carries five zero. And the ordinance title is an ordinance adding to the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code, new chapters one, the building code six, the mechanical code seven, residential code eight, plumbing code, 10, electrical wiring code, 14, uniform solar energy code, and 16, green division standards code. Of Title Eight, relating to building division and adopting California Building Residential Green Building Standards, Mechanical Plumbing and Electrical Codes, the 2010 edition, and Uniform Solar Energy Code, 2009 edition, by reference, and repealing existing chapters one, six, eight, 10, and 14 of Title Eight of the municipal code.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. We move to, excuse me, we move to item nine, Department Reports. Community Water Rate Structure Committee, Public Works Director, Mr. Mark Watkins. Mr. Watkins?
Thank you, Mayor Gillette, members of the public. This particular item is returning to council. We were, in September, we were here before council, talking about our water conservation measures and the water rate structure. So a quick reminder, a number of items throughout the state, including the drought, restrictions on pumping, and large wholesale water increases, led to the water conservation program, and also led to the city council establishing a priority to achieve a 15% conservation of water to meet our goals and to avoid any penalties. To help facilitate that, the city adopted a tiered water rate structure, and that water rate structure went into effect in November 2009. As part of the two-year budget, an additional increase in rates went into effect July 1st of this year. With the higher use of the summertime season and the warmer weather, we started hearing from some of the customers of larger lots in regards to the higher bills. And then on September 28th of this year, a number of folks from the Cano Oaks area came, submitted a petition, asking that council look into the water rate structure further. A council asked city staff to come back with a recommendation to form a committee to do that. That's what we're here tonight to do. So tonight, we'll be asking city council to look at and adopt three different items. One, the guiding principles and scope of work, and then finally, the recommended committee structure as far as water rate users that would be on that. For guiding principles, what we would ask council to consider is that they adopt principles to promote the efficient use of water, to promote a rate structure that's fair and equitable, and that supports the Water Enterprise Fund. It's important to remember, and it would be important for the citizens on the committee to know, that the Water Fund is a standalone fund. It is not supported by the General Fund, and there is no leakage from the Water Fund, pardon the pun, into the General Fund. We also note that under the guiding principles, we ask that it be consistent with local practices, so that we don't do something completely different here than is done in either of the private water purveyors or the other cities in the county, and that we be in compliance with all laws and regulations, and that it also be reasonably easy to administer. There are programs out there that we're aware of that add significant overhead costs because of the complexity. For the scope of work, what we would recommend is that the committee review the city's water rate structure, and come to full understanding of what's included in water rates and how those rates are structured, and then review the rate structures of other communities. And then compare the advantages, disadvantages, look at what makes sense for the city of Thousand Oaks, and prepare a recommendation for the city council. To staff, I'm sorry, to comprise the committee, we recommend three different individuals that represent single-family residences. That would be an individual with a large lot. We suggested that that would be greater than, I think it was 100 HCF per month, an average user, which is running around in the area of 46 HCF per billing period, and a low-water usage residential customer. We also then, to round out all of the city's customers, suggest you had a commercial customer, an irrigation customer, and a multifamily customer. And then to make it an odd number, and to give the council some flexibility, add also a member at large. With that, we would have seven members on the committee. It could be that there is a greater interest in the community for this committee, and council could easily double that number. What we're suggesting is we be very careful to make sure that it is a balanced committee, and that you have representatives of both small lots, large lots, multifamily lots, irrigation customers, and others. With that, the city clerk would be prepared to advertise for this committee by the end of this week. We would suggest that applications be due within a couple of weeks, and that the city council then hold interviews within a week after that. And we would be back in a December council meeting for council to seat the committee, and then we would begin our work. And so with that, we recommend that the council adopt both the guiding principles, scope of work, and committee structure, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Watkins. Questions of staff? Nothing, no, none? Let me start with Mr. Fox, then. Mr. Fox?
Thanks. I think you guys did a good job in bringing back the general parameters of the committee process. A couple of questions and comments for the council. First is, as I understand the staff report, there'll be five meetings, a minimum of five meetings, and these will occur over a period of three months. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. And as I understand the staff report, you're recommending seven members outlined as a representative from a diverse group of water rate users.
Correct.
All right. Any thought to increasing the membership of the committee to better reflect what the Community Budget Task Force composition was? When I first suggested that, a couple of years, well, actually, 10, over 10 years ago now, we were looking at a bigger group, because one, of the volume of work, and second, the number of meetings that they would be meeting, to make sure you had a quorum and a representative group in case somebody missed a meeting. And so I'm thinking more along the lines of 11 to even 15 members. I recognize that's more information for staff, but when you're meeting over a three-month period with very detailed information, it seems to me that there needs to be some allowance for an individual missing a meeting along the way. And I think with just seven, if you have two people missing, particularly if they're from the particular group, I don't think you have a representative group there making recommendations. So I'm just curious, did staff consider that?
What we weren't sure of was what the level of interest would be. And so, you know, certainly we'll do a press release, it'll go up through the city's e-notify, I would suspect, and hope that there's a newspaper article that would also, you know, notify folks. And so I think this number could be doubled, and it would be in that range, it'd be in that 14 to 15 range. And the city council, if they doubled it, might want to give themselves some flexibility of the at-large members, so that after you go through interviews, you've got flexibility how you seat the committee. What we're unsure of is how much interest there might be. And so what we wanted to do is just make sure it's a balanced committee, and that we have representatives from all of the different water users.
Okay. And that would be my sense as well. What was the, well, let me handle the easy one first. The scope of work, I tend to agree with what staff outlined with the scope of work. The one caveat I'd like to place is that if, once the committee is constituted and they've had their meetings, if they wish to expand their scope of work, then there needs to be a mechanism for them to report back to the council and get authority to expand the scope of work. I think the outline that staff has prepared certainly is on target. It certainly goes to the heart of what we heard from the residents, at least those that spoke a couple of weeks ago. And the opportunity for them to, once they have more information, provide recommendations back to the council. If increasing that scope of work will provide for more information and a better report, then I don't want to handcuff anybody. So I'd like to put that, with the council's approval, I'd like to put that caveat in there, that there is a mechanism where the committee, if they want to increase the scope of work, they could do that. By way of example, in my meeting with some of the homeowners in Cano Oaks, there was a variety of issues that were brought up, all of which were very, very germane to the issue of water rates, and some would be more long-term. For example, legislation relief, that would clearly be a long-term issue. So I think it may be important that they are allowed to at least look at that and report back to the council.
Yeah, the scope within the water industry is so large. What we're really trying to do is give them the scope for the structure, to get that piece accomplished first, because that seemed to be where there was interest in more of an immediate relief, and trying to dovetail in with our budget process. And then if there's follow-up items, then that would make sense. It is an area that you could spend, and many people do, spend an entire career just looking at water policy throughout the state.
Right.
So we have to be a little cautious about letting the scope get too big.
The other issue is, how would the committee be selected?
We were anticipating we'd go through the typical city council process. So applications would be due, there would be a city council committee that then interviews those who are interested in being on the committee, and then the city council will come back to, under a, normally a consent item, no, I'm sorry, it's under council items at the end, and the committee members would be seated at a council meeting. So it would be approved by the full
All right.
So, it would be approved by the full council.
Okay. I think that would be, again, I think that's consistent with what's, we've, we've certainly offered to the residents that have, that have shown an interest in that. And I think that would hopefully speed the process up. So, um, I think that's all the questions I have for right now. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Bill Oakley, you had a question?
Yes, I did. Thank you. Would this be considered a, an ad hoc committee?
I'm getting a nod ahead. We, we called it the Water Rate Structure Review Committee. I'm not sure if that makes it an ad hoc committee. It's certainly not a standing committee. So, I'd assume it'd be a committee that'd be convened for that purpose, and then once their purpose was completed, then that would, that would be the end of the committee.
Are we then following the MADDI Act, or? We are, okay. But we are abbreviating the thirty-day waiting period. We, you said, Madam Clerk, that we would be able to do that?
Correct. Uh, the MADDI Act only requires at least ten days after the posting of the notice for them to be appointed, so it would be long past ten days for appointments.
Okay. Thank you. And if I am not mistaken, the budget task force had, I believe, eleven members? I'm wondering if Mr. Kid, was it more than eleven members? Fifteen? Okay. They dealt with everything in the city, basically, in terms of our budget. They looked at, at everything. How many customers, if you could please refresh my memory, does the Thousand Oaks, the, sorry, the municipal, um-
We've got about sixteen thousand.
How many water customers do we have?
About sixteen thousand.
We have sixteen thousand? Okay. Um, and the residents who mainly, from the last council meeting we had, the residents mainly came from the Cuneo Oaks area? The ones who have concerns-
Yes.
-about the water rate? And how many are there in that Cuneo Oaks area?
In the range of three hundred?
Okay. So, we would be choosing approximately fourteen, fifteen residents from that area, or from the sixteen thousand customer base which we have?
Yeah. Our, our proposal is that we would be choosing from, throughout the sixteen thousand customer base. So, we're recommending that you have one representative from commercial, one from industrial, one from multifamily, and then three from single-family residential. So, single-family residential by far make up the bulk of our accounts. But what we're recommending is that you have one from a single-family residential with high usage, and we define that as greater than a hundred HCF per billing period, one with approximately average usage, which is around forty-six, and then one with low usage would be less than thirty. So, we're saying you should have three single-family, but they should represent both high, average, and low users, not a, a lot of, of just one customer class on the committee.
And the member-at-large would also be a city customer and not from any of the other two purveyors?
Right. Well, we were anticipating that they, they would all be city water customers, and the member-at-large, in this case, as we came up with what we thought the recommended structure was, we had six, and we thought, you know, oftentimes when the council goes through a committee process, you've got, for example, two very highly qualified, highly motivated individuals, but they might fall within one of these. It gives the council some more flexibility to suit, I'm sorry, to seat people on their, on the committee, so.
Okay. I'm just wondering about the need for doubling the number of, of committee members that you suggested, given that we have, our committees usually tend to be five or more, dealing with citywide issues affecting a hundred and thirty thousand people and not just sixteen thousand. I do realize water is a highly sensitive issue, but I, I, I'm just questioning the wisdom in increasing the, the task force or the ad hoc committee to, to eleven or, or thirteen or fifteen members. I don't know whether that would create more of a conflict, or perhaps the opposite. Who knows? Thank you.
Okay. Anything further? Okay. A, a couple of things, Mr. Watkins. First of all, I, I appreciate and I understand from the presentation that the process to move this is moving as quickly as it can to remain, and remaining within compliance of the rules, regulations, laws, ordinance, everything that we have to operate under. And, and I just need that reassurance from the city clerk and from you again.
Yeah. I've been working closely with the city clerk, looking at upcoming council dates, and we've also got a reorg meeting, and we're trying to figure out if we, if we really wanted to make a sooner council date, we'd have to make the applications due by next Friday, have the interviews the very next week, and then we wouldn't actually be able to make the publishing dates for council. We could possibly bring it as a, as a green packet item, but there's a lot of assumptions in there, because if, if you didn't get the folks, if you didn't have a chance to advertise it, and, and that wouldn't give us any time to, I mean, you basically have to set the interviews and say, "This is the time," and so, people who had no flexibility would automatically be excluded.
Okay.
And, and then the next meeting after that is, is the reorg meeting, so it really means we're going to come back in the first full meeting in December, and then that gives us the, the ability to advertise this for a couple of weeks and, and try to get some interest.
Well, given the situation that we are now all aware of is that the meter is, is running, so to speak. There will be another, another bill cycle coming through and what have you, and, but we also recognize that we, there are governance structures in place and, and rules and, and protocols and what, that have to follow, that we as a municipal corporation have to follow. And I just, I, I know you're watching that, but also, I also believe, and I, and I'm confident that you're aware of the degree of urgency involved in this. Uh, I've heard from not only residents in Cuneo Oaks, but I've heard from residents in, a number of residents from other areas within the city of Thousand Oaks service area and within Cal Ameri, uh, Cal, Cal American and American Water Service. And so, this is, this is a very significant issue, and I appreciate you moving on this and moving just as quickly as possible. With that thought in mind, I would suggest that an invitation be extended to representatives of both Cal American and California Water Service to at least sit in and monitor this, because we've got almost two-thirds of our city. I know they're kind of, they're kind of waiting to see what happens, but as, as mentioned, we have a hundred and thirty thousand residents, and this, this particular issue affects regardless of which service, which retailer is providing the service to them. So, a suggestion might be to ensure, at least extend the invitation to allow them to participate so they have their information firsthand. Okay? And then I had a couple of questions. I just, I'm, I'm not, I'm not really sure, but I, the question would be, could the city have avoided or delayed the recent water rate adjustment and the tiered rate structure by using Water Fund reserves and/or transferring funds from wastewater fund to the Water Fund? What, what kind of area are we into with things like that?
Uh, well, the-
Uh, just, excuse me, I think the city manager wants to say something here.
So, it would appear.
I'll, I'll grab that one.
He's jumping up and down and waving at me.
Okay. So, I heard, use of Water Fund reserves and transfer between funds. Our financial policy, this question did come up over the last few years as the Water Fund reserve balance was diminishing, and we did look at that. I think, Mark, you explained that, if not tonight, the last time we were in front of the council on this issue. We were not able to delay or defer the rate adjustments to meet the MWD state reduction requirements by relying on fund balance, because we didn't have enough. If we would have tried to do that, we would have run out of money. I should warn the, or remind council, our balance fell, I think, below a million dollars, and we were well below our financial policy requirement for the Water Fund, which is five to fifteen percent. We're trying to get to fifteen percent, but we're way below that now. And then the question was, can you take money from the wastewater fund and transfer to the Water Fund? No. Blatantly illegal, or a violation of our financial policies, and because our, the rate payers are not the same. The wastewater rate payers are not the same as the water rate payers, they're different. We have some folks who have their sewers provided elsewhere, and then there are city water customer, and vice versa. So, if the city or any other agency wanted to do that, that would be illegal and just simply not allowed. I suppose you could, if you wanted to pursue general fund, but there are some transfers in, but that would be some other violations as well. So, including gift-to-public funds and that type of thing. Thank you.
Okay. That's, that's where I want to go, and I had one other thing. Understanding how our water gets here, either Colorado River diversion or through the California Water Project, and it comes into the Metropolitan Water District, who wholesales it to Cuyagus, who wholesales it to the city, and we retail it out, we and the other, the other retailers. And my question is, in part of the presentation from some of the homeowners, we, it was mentioned that they felt that we should take a stronger stance, I forget the exact verbiage, but it was a stronger sta, uh, the city should take a stronger stance in resisting the increases or the procedures engaged in by both Matt and Cuyagus. And this isn't one of those things where we can say, "Look, we don't like the way Matt or Cuyagus is act, we're going to go to another water wholesaler," because to the best of my knowledge, there is no other water wholesaler. This is it. So, with that thought in mind, my question is, do we know, does Cuyagus, besides giving us rate increases, do they also put on surcharges to above the actual cost of the water? Are they charging us for handling, for pumping, for, at a proportionate increase to the rate increases that we're paying? Do we know the answer to that?
Well, Cuyagus's budget actually is, is similar to ours, where about two-thirds of their entire budget is purely a pass-through cost of what their cost of water is. What they do is similar to what we do. They, they have to look at what their salary costs are, if there's retirement cost increases or healthcare cost increases, if they've got capital budget needs, how their reserves are looking. They do, they do the whole thing, just like we do, and then based on that, balance out what their anticipated revenues are and what their expenditures are going to be. And so, the, the answer, the short answer is yes, Cuyagus is probably going to add on something in addition to what Metropolitan's adding on. So, if there's a wholesale water increase coming through from Metropolitan, there, Cuyagus is going to add on another incremental piece. So, it's not a surcharge, it's not a flat rate in any fashion. Cuyagus is going through a, a whole budgeting process similar to what the city would do to determine what its needs are.
All right. Then let me ask you this. How many cities does Cuyagus serve as the wholesaler? Uh, not, how, how many clients? Cities, special districts, counties, et cetera? Do we, do we have a sense of how many retailers are receiving their water from Cuyagus?
They, they serve, you know, a total of six cities, because basically everything south of the Santa Clara River, but there's a number of others in there. Probably, the total number's probably close to twenty, some of those being fairly small. But there's some small municipals, I'm sorry, yeah, some small municipal districts they serve. They also, of course, serve all the private water purveyors. So, it's probably, probably in the order of twenty. I don't have an exact number.
Okay. But the, the point is, we're, we're not in a vacuum here. There, there are a lot of other people, a lot of other agencies, all going through the same process, and subject to the same increases, the same restrictions, the same potential penalties, et cetera. That, that was my point, so.
And, and we have had the opportunity to meet with the, the head of the Metropolitan Water District as far, and, and also their chief financial officer, and they've come up here to the Cuyagus headquarters so that we could meet with them, express our concerns, and it is very useful, because they don't always know what the retail purveyors, those of us who are on the front lines, are hearing. And so, we try very hard to let them know, and they've, many times in the past, proposed larger increases or, or other things that we have worked with them to try to figure what their needs were, moderated those increases over time, and did a lot of other things. And so, they've been responsive. A lot of things have been beyond purely Metropolitan's control also, with the drought, with some of the regulatory issues and others, and they've been forced to go out and find some alternative sources that have caused them to raise their, their rates. But, you know, we have been very active in, in participating, both through Cuyagus, Metropolitan, and others, trying to keep those rates where they need to be, and letting those people hear what we're hearing from our residents so that, so that they're familiar and, and very aware of what the issues are.
Okay. And my final, final question, Mr. Watkins, if we, as, as this committee is constituted and it looks into it and it investigates or evaluates the entire, the entire spectrum of issues related to this, this situation, and they come up with some ideas that they feel that we, as a municipality, are being unfairly treated by someone in the distribution chain, and we're, we see no opportunity to, to administratively address that. What is the, what is the area of relief? Who oversees this? Is this under CPUC, under the California Public Utilities Commission? Who overs, who's the next step up?
Well, Cuyagus is, is an elected municipal board, so they've got elected members, just like the city council has elected members. And so, if, if there was something, I'm not sure exactly you're, you're saying, if we're being treated unfairly in some fashion, that would be our first source of recourse, is Cuyagus themselves.
Exactly.
Yeah. Beyond there, I think we end up, up at the Department of Water Resources, something on those lines. CPUC governs the private utilities, not the publics.
Okay. That's what, that's where I, where I was going with that, so. Okay. Any further questions of staff? There being none, we do have a speaker on this item, Mr. Nick Kidway. Mr. Kidway?
Nick Kidway, resident of Newberry Park, customer of Cal AM, and director concerned citizens of, of Thousand Oaks. I just could not help but laugh about the new comment that you cannot take money from wastewater and the Water Fund and juggle it around. As a veteran of this chamber, I would like to remind the council that all this was done with about fifteen funds to build this building. And I'm not just talking hogwash, it's a fact. And unfortunately, no one took it to the courts. In fact, I've come back to obey the Constitution. I mean, the interesting thing is about this report, and you have a meeting that's going to be held, I, I believe that's on the website also of the residents about the water. The real issue is not being mentioned, is that there is a small fish called the smelt, and a judge has ruled, and we are paying for the pumps, et cetera, and we cannot get the water here. And that beautiful candidate, Sarah Palin, in Orange County, she talked about the smelt in a, in her unique way, and said, "In Alaska, we call it bait." I mean, this is what the rabid environmentalists are doing in slowly destroying this country, and you should fo, you should rise up and, and challenge that. And you, this Thousand Oaks always prides and wants to be the leader. I mean, you should have, have a meeting of all this jurisdictions over here in this big chamber, and spend money to appeal the judge's ruling. I don't know where it stands. I mean, as, can staff tell us if the appeal has been filed to the, to the, to the judge's ruling? And then coming back to the committee. It's interesting that Mayor Protam had all these wonderful comments, and he made the wonderful comment in December to expand the auto mall committee, and it went from nine eleven, nine people or eleven people to twenty-one. But I've come over here and I've said, I mean, that committee, I mean, I've been in committees in this city since nineteen ninety-one, and it's the first time that I've seen that a committee has taken an unfair and one-sided position. Just the numbers. In the last two meetings, only eleven people showed up, and I asked, and other people asked, they moved the time from six to four-thirty. So, only old fogies and retired, I mean, excuse the language, but I mean, that's the truth. Only retired people could come. I also said, sent the email, and one person said, "Why did you come on the committee?" I came on the committee because it would be, I mean, I do this business in the evening. I make a living during the day. I cannot come during the day. And then the, it's such a shame that, I mean, you have moved the item to November eighth, and nobody on the council talks about the auto mall sign and sends it back to the committee. Even in the eleven, there were three dissenters. It was not unanimous. So, we had a budget task force which I was on. People have, have to grow into the committees, they, they don't know how to do it. And so, in two, three months, you should bring back the people from the budget task force and maybe the residents' roundtable, and let us work this out, and that would show that your, your intent is to help the people, and don't forget Cal AM people. I mean, there's a whole bunch of us, and I know you don't have as much rights, but you should really include them. Thank you, Mayor.
Any additional questions of staff? What's the pleasure of the council? Mr. Fox?
Yeah, I'll, I didn't hear much comment from the council, so I'm going to go ahead and move forward with the amendment to the committee process unless there's some exception or, or with that, but.
Please clarify what you, what you wanted to see in there.
My own view is, I think we need to expand the number of members on the committee to fifteen. That better reflects the community budget task force. They're going to meeting, be meeting a minimum of three months over five meetings. My sense is, and my experience is- My sense is, and my experience is, they're likely going to have more meetings. And I think by increasing the number of people in the committee, you're going to have, first, a better representation of the community, more participation. It also provides for the allowance of individuals who may miss a meeting. And on that note, just by direction, I clearly think that these meetings need to be scheduled at a time that can facilitate working people, retired people, and everybody else, which would be a meeting in the evening, after 5:00 p.m., certainly. So, that would be the, and then, the other issue is, is that provide for some mechanism so the scope of work can be expanded if, in fact, the committee identifies an issue that they would like to explore a little more. So, that would be the motion.
That's the motion. Let me ask for clarification, Mr. Watkins, or perhaps Mrs. Lawrence. Does, in your opinion, doubling the size of the commission, does that in any way impede or slow down the process?
I don't think so. I mean, we're going through an application process.
That's good.
It's going to be a few more interviews for city council, and then, we seat the committee and get to work, so.
That's good. I just wanted to ask that question. Okay. Yes, Mrs. Spildel, if you had a question. Comments to the motion?
I did like your idea of extending an invitation to the other water vendors.
Thank you. And I think procedurally, you can do that without anything else, but I think they've got to be there, so they hear right from the very beginning what's going on. Because whatever comes out, whatever recommendations or action the council takes, we've got 2/3 of the city that's in a similar situation and waiting to hear, so.
So, if we were to do that, they wouldn't be kind of official members of the committee, but they'd be invited to participate?
That's correct. I just want to make sure they get the information.
Sure.
Dr. Glancy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to clarify that the composition's going to remain the same, same ratio.
Yes.
Thank you. And the scope of work, I think the primary scope of work should be addressed first before it's expanded. Is that acceptable?
That's fine. That would be my sense as well.
Thanks.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Mitnick?
I would just like to remind council, we have these type of committees, and they have a large number. We have run into quorum issues. So, those citizens who do agree to participate, the more members we have, the harder it is to get a quorum at times. So, we'll work really hard. Our staff will be pest to make sure that they attend the meetings. But, we have run into logistical challenges in the past. So, we hear you loud and clear what your desires are.
I understand, but also, considering the personal economic issues involved in this, I think there may be more than just a distant, unobjective interest in, anyhow. Okay. Anything further? Yes, Dr. Glancy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, again. I feel very strongly about the scarcity of water and the relative increasing expense of water, and that's not going to change. It's only going to get worse. As one of the speakers said, part of this issue is caused by a small fish that may be bait. It's also caused by a decision that pertained to salmon. Judge Wanger's decision has been challenged, but to no avail. DWR was brought up as perhaps some sort of help for us, but this is the organization that denied the Met a seat at the table when discussing water issues. So, we need to remember, there are not necessarily any friends up there. I know that none of this is being really considered. We're dealing with another issue, but I think it's another opportunity to stress to people just what a serious issue water and its supply is to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Glancy. Any additional comments? Maker of the motion?
Yeah, I just want to thank the residents that took the time to come down, both in the council meeting. I want to thank them for their time at Mr. Free's house. In my view, it really is an example of what good local government ought to be. We met in an individual's living room with a number of perspectives, a number of the residents that showed up.
Really?
They didn't even have agreement amongst themselves on what the issues should be. But, there was a lot of listening on the part of the city family and a lot of sharing of ideas. And, you know, this occurred in less than a month with residents coming down, and now we're taking action and we're putting a committee together. And like the budget task force, my sense is that the committee will look at this issue, recognize the complexity of it, but at the end of the day, do good work for the city and good work for this council. And rest assured, whatever the recommendations are going to be coming back, it will be a better reflection of the residents and the folks who pay the bills. And I think that's the takeaway from this. And also, want to congratulate staff for dealing with a difficult issue and not being defensive and being open, and at the same time, providing, you know, factual information to the residents in areas that they are clearly not the experts, they don't claim to be. But, you know, they're paying the bills. And so, to have an open and transparent government, this is what it's all about. Let's open the books. Let's show them what we do. Let's provide the information, and I think we're going to get a good product out of that. So, I'm looking forward to this.
Thank you very much. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. Item 10, redevelopment agency reports, we have none. 11, committee commission board reports, we have none. Council issues and commendations, follow-up to reports, we had that at the front end. Anything further, Mr. City Manager?
No, I don't, but I have announcements for upcoming items.
Please.
Our next council meeting will be on November 9th. Prior to that, remember, there's an election on November 2nd, so...
Oh, really?
Voters are encouraged to vote. On November 3rd, the next night, we have it on the city website, and we've done some noticing, but I'll take advantage of the time here to remind the public, especially those who live in Newberry Park, that we will be holding a community meeting to discuss the proposed solar canopy installation and parking lot renovation project at the Newberry Park Branch Library, November 3rd, Wednesday, 7:00 p.m., and information's on the city website. The next council meeting is November 9th, two weeks from tonight. At this time, we have two public hearings scheduled. One involves the implementation of the city's housing element ordinance. We're required to do that by law. Second public hearing is the annual review of water and wastewater connection fees for new development. Every year, the council is able to adjust those charges as they relate to the producer price index adjustments. We will also, that's really about it. So, that's it for the city manager.
I have a question, Mr. Mitnick. On the community meeting in Newberry Park on the library solar issue, the notification, my assumption is it went out to 500 feet within the project? The normal, do we have anyone that can help us with that?
I think...
Oh, yes.
Andrew Powers.
I believe that they doubled that to 1,000.
Okay. I was going to say, because this is the primary gateway into the Newberry Park area of Thousand Oaks.
And we've also had a brief run in the Star. It's been on the homepage of the website, and a press release was sent out.
Okay. I would suggest that if we maintain that list of homeowners associations on that entire Orchard Road corridor, clear out to Dos Vientos and all of those city areas that are served, so that's fine. We want to let as many folks as possible in that region know, because this is a very critical aesthetic issue, and we want to make sure they get a chance to see it, so. Okay. Thank you. Item 13, we've completed city manager follow-up and announcements. Item 14, closed session. Mrs. Albano, would you care to enlighten us?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, viewing public and staff. The council will be going into closed session to discuss two cases under Government Code Section 54, 956.9A. The first case, both are existing litigation. The first case is Chateau Holdings, Etal versus City of Thousand Oaks, Etal. The second case is Fattenhauer versus City of Thousand Oaks, Etal. And there will be no need to report anything out from either of those closed sessions.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Albano. At this time, we will adjourn to our regular meeting on November 9th, 2010, 6:00 p.m. in this chamber. Thank you. We're adjourned.